Be good. Okay, it is, I'd say, six oh three, and I'd like to call meeting to order here. This is the the appeal administrative appeal for Hamlet Quinn and Freshwater Stone. At first, I want to make sure we have a quorum here, which I'd say we do. Yes, we do.
A quorum is a majority of the board.
Correct.
Yeah, four majority of seven, so.
Yes.
All good.
Seven. Yes, and and this was a public notice, you had that? Yep.
And a hundred and forty five.
Excellent. No, I'm good. Now, do we have anybody here that needs to recuse themselves or anything or have issues with this their past?
I'm John March.
Before you start, just to keep things simple. Lillian?
Well, yeah.
Andrews, as you accused yourself, she apparently participated in the in the on the she as a member of the planning board. So I think it inappropriate for her to participate in the field of that decision. So she is she is recuse herself for this evening, but I know Mr. March has some couple of conflict issues she'd like to raise.
Yeah, I don't think they've raised any conflict issues, but I feel I should disclose that recently I was a client of Reverend Winchell for an unrelated matter. Also, I have used Freshwater Stone to provide masonry services at our house for several occasions. And I've also been a longtime customer of MCM Electric, which is one of Mike who said it. As I say, I don't think any of those give rise to any bias or conflict interest, but there it is.
Everybody good with that? Yeah. Thanks. So we'll have opening statements, we'll start with Freshwater Stone and Harold McQuinn. And if we could, could we please step up to this little podium here? The owl doesn't really pick up a lot, has been fairly close to it. So when you speak, could you state your name and please stand up here to state your case?
Could I offer something to provide a little structure on tonight? Because we there's there's a there's an appeal, obviously, and there should be cross appeals. It it seems like it might be more streamlined and more efficient to address the two, what I would call dispositive arguments that have been advanced by McQuinn, I'm sorry, I'm going to just McQuinn. I mean, disrespect by McQuinn. So the planning board denied McQuinn's permit application for two reasons. One, because it they felt that it didn't meet the purpose provisions in the ordinance. And two, because they found that the easement that McQuinn offered as evidence of right title or interest didn't because it required McQuinn to go back to the landowner to get a prior approval before construction and maintenance was done, that that wasn't sufficient right title or interest. A ruling on those two issues are dispositive. The other issues that have been raised by McQuinn and the issues that have been raised by on the cross appeals all deal with sort of conditions that would have attached if the permit had been approved. So it 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 seems to me that the board ought to take up those two issues first. Because if it if it finds that the board was proper in just in denying the applications for either of those two reasons, then the appeal, the then there's no need to discuss the conditions that would have attached had it been approved. Does that make sense?
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, so it it may be useful at this age, I mean, the all the appeals are on deck for sure. But it maybe it would be helpful for the parties to address those two issues first. Let the board vote on those and then depending on how the board votes on those, then we can get to the issues that the the appeal issues that relate to conditions. Does that make sense to the parties?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Then you said, what do you feel you want to address first or address them both at the same time?
Sure. Shall I go?
Sure. Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ed Bear from Reverend Winchell, my colleague John Hunter is here and Paul McQuinn and Jeff Gamble, McQuinn of Harold McQuinn and Jeff Gamble of Freshwater Stone. You characterize this as an opening remarks, but I think we're just going to make our arguments.
Right.
Okay, all right. And and I'll stick to the script that's been suggested by by your attorney. You have received from all parties legal memorandums or briefs, and I I trust that you've had a chance to to read those. And if you have questions, I also trust that you would ask me, ask any other counsel or ask your counsel what those questions are, hopefully, we can provide you with with answers. Given that you have fairly thorough legal briefings here, I want to try to put this together holistically for you. And I and I will focus on the two issues that the planning board found our application deficient on. But I think a little bit of context is in order. This application, as you may all know, if you've read a newspaper here in town or if you lived here in town for any period of time, it's been going on for seven, eight years. It started longer ago than that, though, because McQuinn had been operating on this site for many years, for decades. And now we'll get into the the road issue eventually. But in the course of the re planning board's review of this application, it was the most thorough review of an application I've experienced in thirty four plus years of practice. Every item that was reviewed under the performance standards of the quarry licensing ordinance, almost everyone took at least one meeting where they took it. This is the item tonight, and when we come next month, we're going to do this item. And so it was a laborious process. There were a few nights when there were some items that could easily be checked off, like no signs or dust control, things like that. So we managed to cover a couple every now and then. It was never like we felt like we were welcome with open arms, but we weren't here to convince people that they had to be warm and fuzzy with us. We were here to meet the standards of the ordinance. So it was clear that we weren't going to convince the neighbors that we were going to be a good fit for them. That was that was also clear. And the meetings dragged on. And as some of you may know, I don't recognize faces all that well. And it's been a while now, but we were here back in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, because after two plus years of review and after having first decided at the very first meeting or two that we had standing to pursue this application of planning board reverse course and said, well, no, you don't. So that meant we had to go to court and ask the court whether that was correct and after we first came here. And I think by very close vote, this deliberative body voted three to two to support the planning board's decision. But the court, the business court, didn't see it that way and sent it back and said, no, you do have standing, you should proceed. So we did. And at that point, there were only two items that were left. One was a screening and buffering, and that's addressed here. It's one of the items that we're not going to cover at this stage anyway. That's one of the views with how far we have to be set back and remove the overburden, things like that. And the other one was noise. Everybody knew that noise is going to be the big issue. That was clear and noise took up. Well, I think the first big meeting on noise was on in August two thousand nineteen. And then there was at least two more meetings in two thousand nineteen on noise. Mr. Pleggy had an expert, we had an expert, eventually the board itself had an expert. And then more or less COVID hit, and we didn't do anything from March until late September when we had a meeting. It was a surreal experience, there was a huge tent on the green. We had a meeting and that vote was three to two that we prevailed on noise. We have prevailed on the earlier issue, the only other remaining issue as well, earlier on, after being sent back to the planning board by the court, although we questioned whether or not the board got it fully right and whether, you know, he said that we had to be set back fifty feet. But we met the the screening and buffering standard as well. So pretty much on free. But I need to explain to you the struggle that went on. It was clear, the planning board, and you have it in your record, I hope you've seen it, the planning board votes were almost all unanimous, begrudgingly unanimous. If you read the minutes, if you saw any of the videos, we didn't, there were no gimmies from that board. There was one vote, there was four to one, as I recall, and then the noise vote was three to two. And I may not have it exactly right, but I don't think there are any other votes that weren't unanimously in our favor. So I think what everybody sensed was happening was that the planning board, which was not inclined to want to approve this project, certainly the room full of people who were quite vociferous at every meeting, didn't want it to be approved. But as we went through it, step by step by step, we got to the end and it had been approved, including the road. And that's where I'll start now. The road in nineteen eighty five or give or take, you put it in early to eighty five, it was in the eighties. Harold McQuinn, Paul McQuinn's father Ron running the company at that time, bought the land where this quarry was located, where this this quarry is still located to this day. There was always only one way in and out. It's now called the Crane Road. We probably have all seen, you know, where it is. We had a thirty foot wide easement. And there were at least a couple of other properties that accessed there that got to their properties along Crane Road as well. And we were perfectly content with our easement and we used it. And the planning board found the road to be perfectly acceptable and voted that it was perfectly acceptable. And then after seven years, it was determined that when the road is initially established, from the right of way it was established, it needed to be fifty feet wide. And it was only thirty feet wide. So that was thirty seven years ago. So we went and bought a fifty foot wide easement from this stream setting. We widened it by ten feet on either side. But that was going to satisfy everyone. They wanted it to be fifty feet wide, they'd already said that it did, they were satisfied with the road. They'd already voted on that. But Mr. Masetti, at the urging of his attorney, what a provision in his deed, easily that said that the road in order to be maintained or repaired, you had to have his prior approval not to be unreasonably withheld. Now, that's a term that's used quite often in documents, to see what to be unreasonable. And that didn't seem like terribly big deal to us. I don't think to use the parlance that you that you read and hear that that somehow undermined our right title and interest to use that road. And the planning board, though, quite candidly, planning board at the urging of the opponents, saw that one little thing they could grasp on after all of those votes were approved on every substantive criteria and say, you don't have sufficient right title and interest, because maybe someday, Mr. Masetti will get up on the wrong side of the bed and say, no, you can't fill that pot. Again, it's not just our road, other people use that road too. That seems so speculative as to be, if I can't ask nine for anybody to think that you can't use and maintain a road that you've been using the last thirty years, nobody's complained about the way it's been maintained. And then somebody's an all of a sudden pull the rug out from under you because they can't. They can only do that if it's reasonable, there'd have to be a reason. Why? Why is it Mr. Masetti that we can't let him fill that pot today or that? And what are the chances of that happen? Many times with an application, you'd have to demonstrate financial capacity to perform the project, to do it, to operate it. And on the day you file your application, you're going to a million dollars in the bank, you get back, he gives you a letter to suggest, of course, you can do that. And then sometimes times change. Maybe you don't have a million dollars next year or five years from now. But it certainly would be speculative to say, well, how do you know you always going to have that money? How do you always going to be able to do that? It doesn't. The world doesn't work that way, the law court doesn't see it that way. We've cited due to cases that that would stand for the proposition that the planning board's decision, we didn't have sufficient right title, this is wrong. The opponents will cite you to the same case and say, no, it stands for the opposite proposition. Well, it's a question of law, and those are the things that you get to review, and I'm sure those are the things that Mr. Huber is going to tell you are within your bail with to to interpret and to prove. You're not here to evaluate the substantive decisions that the planning board has made, we'll get into some of those perhaps, but that's really not not your role of the standard that's set for what in your ordinance. So the road, the road hasn't changed in thirty years, same people continue to use it. In fact, another person got a building permit a while back and is building a house out there, same road, hasn't changed because he's in thirty feet wide. Everybody else is thirty foot wide, we had to get a fifty foot wide, so we did. And then the planning board said, or in addition, the planning board says, well, you've got to bring that road up to standards set forth in the subdivision ordinance, because we refer you back to the language, so the nitro suddenly brings us to the subdivision ordinance. And it says, you've got to build the road for certain standards, well, this isn't something. In fact, when you read the ordinance that controls, which is the the quarry licensing ordinance, it describes two types of roads. There are existing roads, I trust, but now you understand this road exists on the face of the earth, it's been there for fifty or more years. We've owned our lot and have used it for forty more years. That's an existing road. And there's nothing, absolutely nothing to support the planning board's conclusion that we have to build a new road, because we are an existing unlicensed quarrying operation, the court has said that. There's an existing road that leads to existing, existed, existed, exists. The planning board had previously found that road to be perfectly sufficient for what we're doing. But now, the last minute, when they realize that they've approved everything along the way, possibly have to demonstrate they're grasping for something. And they said, well, you got to bring that road up to current day standards or whatever. Well, that's bizarre. But after seven or eight years, what does an applicant do? They go back, they scratch their heads, they say, how much has that been costing? All of the money. Well, they say we've got to do it. But legally, we know we don't have to, and eventually a law court comes, like, yeah, that's crazy, just look at the planning wording of the ordinance. But we develop a plan, we commit a plan that meets all the standards. Then we get told, yeah, but Mr. Masetti might not let you fix and maintain that road or build that road in the future, because you have an easement that says that he could withhold his permission. Well, that's not exactly what it says, it says he can't unreasonably. So that's the road. We think we win because one, it's an existing road, we don't have to do a damn thing to it. We don't have to build what we wrote, even if we did, we could, but we don't have to. But more importantly, what the real issue is, is that we have sufficient right title and interest in that easement to maintain it and to have a quarry. The second issue, the second and only other basis for denial is made up. Now, the ordinance has performance standards, and they're called that performance standards. You have to meet them, you have to demonstrate we can meet all those standards. The ordinance also has a purpose section, which sets what the law, the goals and purposes of the ordinance, and it is to protect the health of the involved here, the community. And there's also something thrown in there as a bone to the people that own land and want to develop it, that, you know, it's there for your benefit too. That is not the standard. There's an arms length or the cases that say that the the purpose provision of an ordinance is not a standard for review. It might inform the planning board when it's reviewing the standards, so what those standards ought to be weighed in accordance with. It's something so dusty that it causes a diminution in the 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 quality of life in terms of the health, safety and welfare of the community is a plant belching pollution that's causing health problems and things of that nature, it could very well. That's how a performance standard is supposed to be used, it's not a standard in and of itself. So when you tell an applicant, after eight years, after having checked yes on every single box, if you get to the end and you say, but you know what? All these people have been complaining so long and so loudly that there must be something we can do. So let's blow them on to the purpose section of the ordinance and say that, except for the fact that we said everything is fine and you've met all of the standards that you have to meet, we still don't think it's a good idea. And so we're going to deny it because we don't think it's consistent with the purpose standards of the ordinance. Well, that's not the law. There are plenty of cases to say that's not the law, and I'm sure that Mr. Huber will advise you accordingly on whether you can import the purpose vision and wave a magic wand and make it a standard for review, much less alone, make it a standard for the purposes of denying an application where the applicant has otherwise met all of the review requirements. It's absolutely bizarre to think that that would have gone down that way. Now, if you don't want me to talk about whether the planning board's decisions were preliminary, as our opponents would like to suggest, I won't, provided I have an opportunity to do that, if it becomes important to any. But I I I otherwise, I finish explaining to you why the planning board's decisions on those two issues, the road and the purpose provision being a standard at all are erroneous and need to be reversed.
Thanks.
Good evening, my name is Matt Manahan. I'm next on the agenda because Mr. Pleggy has also filed a cross film behalf of his clients, but I thought I'd go first since I'm next to the agenda, although we're still just covering these sorts of issues that Mr. Huber's talked about. I represent this group called the Hall Quarry Neighbors Group. We'll get into who they are, but our April, April twenty twenty two cross appeal listed their names for you. And I also won't get into the standing issue right now of Mr. Huber, because I don't think it'd have to give relative response to this appeal, it may be relevant in if we get to our cross appeal. So in brief, and Mr. Barrett spins the tale of gee, the planning board made its decisions here on every single thing and their final decisions and and all they did is at the end kind of come back and come up with some new lame reason why it is they should have had a permit. That's fiction. There were never any final decisions, and I can get into that, as Mr. Barrett said he could as well. The planning board spent, as he said, years looking at this and came up with preliminary determinations on most of the approval criteria, not all of them, but on most of them, and most of them, in fact, all the ones that they reviewed, did go the way of Quinn requested. But they were preliminary, they were still taking new evidence. This has been going on for years, and and we've got involved in two thousand twenty, we presented new experts on erosion control and storm water and noise and other issues. And those issues were still being presented, and in fact, the hearings hadn't concluded on all those issues. And I can get into those issues if you'd like, but I think it's probably not necessary at this stage. What I would say is that frankly, although Mr. Barrett has tried to make this sound complicated, key question here really is actually quite simple. Was the planning board wrong when it determined that the Muzetti easement does not give McQuinn sufficient rights to ensure, and that's the word that's in the ordinance, that the access road will be maintained in the future as required by quarry license, I call it QLO, quarry licensing ordinance, section six point two eight two. The planning board applied its common sense interpretation of that language, which is their job. And they concluded that the easement would not provide sufficient rights to ensure that the access road will be maintained. That is because the easement expressly requires, as Mr. Barrett alluded to, that McQuinn must obtain the consent of Mr. Masetti before undertaking any construction or maintenance of the easement area, that's what it says. Requiring consent from Mr. Muzetti means that McQuinn must rely on Mr. Muzetti's goodwill to allow McQuinn to maintain the road, which means that McQuinn can't ensure that the road will be maintained. But frankly, you can only hope that Mr. Muzetti will allow the road to be maintained. So that's the reason the planning board denied the application now. Mr. Barrett suggests that this easement is is clearly allows for TRI. The TRI issue is a little bit different than the six point two right to maintain issue, they're related, however. But they're both bases for playing board denial. I would say that it's important to understand that Mr. Muzetti was given the right to go back, playing when the planning board first pointed this problem out. Mr. Barrett said, okay, well, give us a chance to go back and fix the easement. And he was given several months to go back and fix the easement. And what he came back with was language that said the permission may not be unreasonably withheld, that is, it has to be reasonable permission, but still requires permission, and the planning board determined that that's not sufficient to prove that the applicant can ensure that the road will be maintained in the future. And under the terms of the ZBA ordinance, your ordinance, this board has to respect that determination unless it is clearly contrary to specific provisions of the ordinance. That is, you can only reverse the planning board under the ZBA ordinance, your ordinance, if it is clearly contrary to specific provisions of the ordinance. And and this determination that the Muzetti easement was not consistent with six point two, the requirement to be able to ensure that the road be maintained in the future, that's not clearly contrary to specific provision of the ordinance. It was their determination with respect to the Muzetti easement. So that's the the basic issue here. Let me just talk for a minute, because Mr. Barrett talked about it, about the street design standards. He asserts that the planning board incorrectly required the access road to be constructed according to the street design and construction standards in the subdivision ordinance. Let me just say that's a red herring, because McQuinn did provide a revised road plan that met those standards. It's, McQuinn can't really complain about something that he offered to the board. But more important, the planning board denial was not based on refusal to construct to those standards, but on an inability to ensure that the access road is maintained in the future, no matter what standards it's built to. The ZBA, that is, this board does not need to consider whether the subdivision ordinance, street design and construction standards apply, because the planning board determined that regardless, the Muzetti easement is not sufficient to allow McQuinn to ensure that the accessory will be maintained in the future. That conclusion was the only reasonable conclusion to be drawn from the language of the Muzetti easement, and it is not clearly contrary to any provision of the QLO. To the extent even relevant, though, the street design standards are applicable basically for three reasons. Section two point eight of the QLO provides that quarrying operations must be reviewed concurrently with the requirement of the land use ordering zoning ordinance, LUZO. LUZO, section six B eleven two, this is number two, provides that if more than two lots are accessed by the same private road, that road must meet the street design standards of the subdivision ordinance, section five point one four. And third, and finally, the McQuinn access road provides access to more than two lots. So that's why the subdivision street design standards have to be met, because it's in the LUZO, which is incorporated from the QLO. But again, that's not really relevant, because the planning board didn't base its decision on any failure to meet those standards. With respect to the TRI issue, again, it's a related issue, but with respect to that issue, Quinn argues that the easement's requirement for consent from Muzetti is not a sufficient basis to conclude that McQuinn lacks the necessary right title or interest, or RTI, or TRI, sometimes called. There are several problems with this argument. First, the lack of TRI was simply an alternative basis for planning board denial of the application, in addition to the inability to maintain in the future. That's the primary basis. Second, whether or not McQuinn could theoretically show standing to proceed with the application in general terms, the QLO has a specific provision that requires an applicant to show sufficient RTI. Because the inadequacy of the Muzetti easement to allow McQuinn to ensure that the access road can be maintained. To allow McQuinn to ensure that the access road can be maintained in the future. Thus complying with section six point two eight two. The planning board concluded that the RTI was not sufficient. And that's pursuant to section six point one C. And again, it's an alternative grounds for failure comply with six point two eight two. And again, it is not clearly contrary to a specific provision of the ordinance, which would be required for this board to reverse. The playing worse decision. Third, the Supreme Court, the Main Supreme Court held in twenty twenty. That if an applicant seeks to establish RTI using an easement over an abiding property, the applicant must demonstrate. That the easement gives the applicant the right to use the property in the way that's required by the applicable ordinances. And here the ordinance requires. For that the easement has to allow the applicant to ensure that the access road be maintained in the future. Therefore. It's decision of planning board is not clearly contrary to any specific provision of the QLO. Let me just address this public health, safety and welfare issue. Again, it's. It's an alternative argument and it's an alternative basis for denial. So you don't have to reach it if you agree that the Musetti easement was insufficient under six point two. But if you do reach that question. That is whether the post court would be inconsistent with the purposes of the QLO. You need to consider first whether the planning board's determination on that point is clearly contrary to a specific provision of the ordinance. I know I sound like a broken record, but that's that is what the standard is. The answer to that question is the planning board's determination is not clearly contrary to a specific provision of the ordinance with respect to public health, safety and welfare. Six point two A one provides the scoring activities must conform to all applicable town ordinances and regulations. QLO section one point two. Which is part of an applicable town ordinance regulation. Provides that the standards in the QLO are intended to protect public health, safety and welfare. Those provisions provide sufficient authority for the planning board to deny the permit based on the planning board's finding. That and I'm quoting here. This is from the decision. Previous use of the site for quarrying had an adverse effect on health, safety and general welfare. Particularly because of the vibrations and noise caused by pouring activities and quote. The Main Supreme Court has held that a regulation's purpose provisions may be validly used as approval criteria as long as they provide sufficient guidance to the decision maker. That's the range of the crossroads case. From two thousand eight. And frankly, it's not for this board, as I'm sure Mr. Huber will tell you, to determine whether the provisions of the ordinance are unconstitutional. As Mr. Bear has argued, because only a court can make that determination. Only permissible basis for this board to reverse a decision of the planning board. Again, is if the planning board's decision is clearly contrary to a specific provision of the ordinance. And the planning board's conclusion as to the adverse effect of the quarry on public health, safety and welfare is not clearly contrary to a specific provision of the order. But again, you don't even need to reach this issue if you agree that the Musetti easement does not provide sufficient rights for McQuinn to ensure that the access road be maintained in the future. Now, I I do have a fair amount to say specifically with respect to this preliminary votes versus the final votes that Mr. Bear. Is arguing about. But I I will hold that as well out of respect for your time and and the argument and our frankly position, the playing board was right on on the single. The base that it denied the application. So happy to answer any questions now or after Mr. Plaguey.
I think we'll let Mr. Plaguey. Speak and then we'll have questions.
Okay, thank you.
Evening, everybody. Thanks for listening to Membeampligia. I represent Gerald and Laura Chenkovich. Peter and Judy Allen and Jan Coats, all of whom have properties or homes that are but the the applicant's proposed development here. I am. It's always. It's kind of a pleasure sometimes going there, but it's also a little bit of burden. I don't want to just say all the same words that that you've heard. So allow me just to to touch on a couple of issues, please. First of all. The record reflects that Mount Desert's planning board conducted an extraordinarily thoughtful and detailed analysis. Of the evidence that was presented by the applicant and by everybody else, the public and the butters. In considering this application. They carefully considered the words of the quarry license ordinance and where it relates back to the. Land use ordinance, they considered that as well, very carefully. There isn't anybody that could argue otherwise. Tonight is not a do over. It's not a a chance to redo what the planning board did. You guys have seen, we call it a cart, right? And the plan one years ago, a cart of of evidence. It's way more than a cart, right? The volume of evidence. It 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 is not your job, thankfully for you guys. Under the under under your ordinance or the core license or land use ordinance to go over that and make an independent decision about whether. Or not this application meets the ordinance standards. Your job is to determine whether the planning board's decision on. Two issues was clearly contrary to the specific core license ordinance provisions. I want to talk about what clearly contrary means in in. The legal world. The law court, state Supreme Court has held that in judicial settings clearly contrary, that standard means if there is any. Evidence in the record that supports the planning boards or courts findings, any. You have to hold it. You don't get to evaluate. It's not within your jurisdiction or your authority to evaluate whether the evidence was good enough. Or bad enough, or whether the evidence on one side was a little more substantial than you think the planning board gave the credit for. The planning board has the. Original board to hear this application has the exclusive authority to determine. How much weight to give to any particular piece of evidence. So your standard of review now is that if they, if there's evidence supporting. Any evidence supporting the planning board's decision and that decision relates to a specific ordinance provision. You guys have to hold. On the preliminary vote issue, just recall that the votes that preliminary votes Mr. Bear was talking to you guys about happened in some cases years ago. If if he's right that they're final, the chance to appeal those expired decades ago. You know, I have to go there. The March twenty four, two thousand twenty two planning board decision talks about road access. The planning board correctly found that that easement required. The landowner's permission. To maintain the road. That's what the. We keep calling it an easement. So the easement doesn't extend to the maintenance provision. What what they have is permission. They have a license to maintain the road and that's different from an easement easement being a legal right to do something. They have a legal right to pass over the road. They don't have a legal right to maintain it up to the standards that are required by the ordinance. If they want to do that, they have to go to Mr. Musetti and they have to say, Mr. Musetti, can you please give us permission? We think it's reasonable that we want to take action. That means Mr. Musetti. Has the right title and interest. The authority. To determine whether and to what extent maintenance can happen on the portion of the road that he owns. Those are facts. That's the evidence that the planning board was faced with. And based on that, based on the fact that the applicants required. Permission and still require permission to maintain road. That the application was deficient. That's not a sneak attack after years of evidence. That's not. Thinking about public sentiments or, you know, uh oh, something bad's going to happen. That's looking at the words of a recorded document, a document recorded in the registry of deeds and. Determining that those words were not sufficient. Under the ordinance. The words aren't disputed. The requirement of permission isn't disputed. There's no evidence presented to the planning board that McQuinn can do what they want for maintenance without relying on Mr. Musetti. No evidence of that at all. They didn't come before this board and tell you. That they have the unfettered authority to maintain the road as required under the ordinance. If the code enforcement officer gives them a notice of violation saying that the rope has fallen under the appropriate standard. They don't have the power. Fix it. They can't bring themselves into. Compliance with the ordinance. They can't. They have to go to Mike Musetti and Mike Musetti has to say, okay. That is, I'd submit. A sufficient basis to deny the application. If we talk about whether something's clearly contrary to the ordinance, the facts are there, undisputed. And it ties directly into the to to the ordinance sections. Because of that. Respectfully, I think there's only one possible answer to the appeal, I think, to deny the appeal on on that ground. Now, Mr. Manahan, on the other issue, the public health, welfare and safety issue. Cited law. Decision by the big Supreme Court, by the law court that talk about how and when a purpose. Provision of an ordinance can be. An enforceable standard. I don't want to repeat what he said. I just want to point out that the record is replete with evidence that Gerald and Lori Shankovitz had. Health related. Problems, headaches, anxiety, depression, medical issues directly related to the noise and vibration. Couldn't talk in their backyard, couldn't have a conversation in their backyard with pouring activities were going. Plenty of what has that evidence? Peter Allen testified multiple times before the board over the years about the the negative impact. Of this quarrying activity on his health, not what's gonna happen, not what might happen, but what had happened to him based on what. The activity that took place. It was so bad that 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 there's evidence in the planning board record that the code enforcement officer issued a stop work order. Before that stop work order, the the planning board had a ton of evidence from residents from the butters about the health impact of what was happening there. I believe it was Seth Singleton. I might get it wrong. I wrote it down, but it's. There was another neighbor who testified on several occasions about the impact of vibrations. How 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 significant it was and how much it disrupted, affected his sleep, his health. And 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 any one. Of those pieces of testimony is sufficient to overcome that clearly contrary. Standard. That is your, that that is the applicant's burden of proof. Now, the applicant. McQuinn has the burden. In front of this board to prove to you. That the planning board's decision on those two issues. Was clearly contrary to specific ordinance. It's not our burden, the butters burden, that proved to you that the point was right. We have to presume that they are right unless the plane, unless the opponent overcomes that word. Clearly contrary to that by by standard. On purpose, on purpose, it's the war doovers. And 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 if there are legal issues to go to court, we go to court and and your ruling establishes burden of proof and all of that stuff that we go to court. That's not for you. For you. You have to determine, you have to look at the evidence, you have to look at the standard. If there's a standard in the ordinance and there's evidence that supports the planning board's ruling on that standard. You have to deny the appeal. Just do. It's the rules. And all we have are rules and your authorities based on the rules that are written in the ordinance. Thank you for listening to me. I'm happy to to answer questions. I hope I was short enough after the other two presentations.
Yeah. We have any questions?
Another question from Mr. Bear. Joe, Mr. Bear, you said. That the. The language of the purpose section. Might be used to inform the interpretation of the point stand. Correct. You give an example?
Um, sure. Well, I don't know that I can give you an example, but. When evaluating an application's performance standard, you read the standards. And then you say, okay, must must maintain safe and helpful drinking water with the template standard. Because if you don't, then you're having an effect on the health, safety and welfare of the community. That. My my point, I'm being an articulate, I realize, but my point is that the purpose is not a standard. My further point is that the planning board. With that purpose, having been in the ordinance from day one, went through every standard and checked the box on the bathroom with Quinn and met the standard. It only at the end created a new standard. Literally out of thin air. That imported the purpose provisions. Into the review of the performance standards of an ordinance. And said, even though we've approved your application and said it meets all of the standards, we still don't like it. And that's. That's, I I can't give you an example. I I I've never experienced it being done or the planning board did it in this instance. But we cited a couple of cases that are are quite similar to this, in our in our brief.
Do you have anything you want to add to this?
Far as there. No, when you get to your deliberative stage, if you would like me to share my opinion, I'm happy to do so.
Do we have any discussion on it?
Well, I'm not sure where where they probably basically discuss is.
Well, I mean, far as. Okay, we have to see forward then.
I I there are, I have an operating findings as fact, but when. The PB finds the fact.
Well, I keep if we're talking about the road. And all the standards that they're talking about, I think we can move forward to. Talk about some of their. Findings and facts. Because if this is the first issue that we need to discuss is the the road and the issues with it. The legality of it, there was the, what they determined for. In that conclusion.
I I don't understand why the planning board is is making a, a what I would think invalid assumption. Assumption is is that. Someone would not want Crane Road to be maintained. Therefore, they can ensure. That that this seems contrary to common sense to me.
Are you are you looking to me for guidance or are you? I'll take either.
Get guidance in terms of procedures. I'm not sure. I'm not sure this is the place to discuss this.
Okay, okay. But let me share my my insight and. My view of of the matter and let's 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 have the board tackle. Just to keep being structured and organized and so everybody in the audience and we assume can understand exactly where the board's going. May maybe we tackle the issue of RTI first, the the issue of of the road. As you know, the face is all the attorneys have said. The planning board denied the the application because in its determination. McQuinn was unable to establish that it had sufficient right title or interest. I I don't think there's any dispute that the easement allowed them to construct a road and maintain that road, but the easement clearly requires that McQuinn. First, secure the approval from from the landlord, Mr. Musetti. And it is true that the the easement specifically says that that approval shall not shall not be reasonably withheld. But it is approval that needs to be secured.
How is how is that different than a a? Old vague right away that is viewed on the subject of of the, my problem with this is is that if we apply. Applying this. Trying to be fair to the town of Mount Desert and all all property. Trying to be fair to the town of Mount Desert and all, all properties within the town of Mount Desert. Including our, the town of Mount Desert's properties themselves. This and, you know, applying this interpretation. To other situations in town gets quickly problematic, so I want, I want to be fair if we, if we're creating a new precedent. I un- I want to understand why they. Uh, what evidence, what evidence do they have present that it is impractical to just go to Mike Musetti and say. The road needs to be repaired, can we repair the road, that seems like common sense to me.
Allow me to lift the burden off of you. You, you should not be considering the precedent. You should not be considering impact, you should not be considering how this might apply to other cases. You need to look specifically at this case and only this case without regard for the, 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 the impact of your decision. Okay, and, and that's, that's the role that you've been placed in. Um, that's the uh, as, as. Mr. Plaguey said, there are rules and, and you are, you are bound by these rules. Um. But the sole question.
In determining whether, whether, are we allowed to, to, to question whether they made it, whether the planning board made a valid assumption?
Uh, your question is, did the planning board err? Uh.
But making invalid at some.
By, by, by determining. That this easement provides insufficient right title or interest.
Right.
That's the, the planning board said that that easement as drafted as, as given to McQuinn. Does not provide sufficient right title or interest for McQuinn to be able to maintain. And uh, that construct and maintain that road as required. To en- ensure that, that, that continued maintenance of that road under the, under the ordinance.
I, I understand that, yeah.
Okay, so that, 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 that's the sole issue on the table, I mean, it's, it's both an easy, it's, it's nice that that's the only issue on the table. Um, but. It, it, because it's, it's, it's very narrow. It's, 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 it's very narrow. Was their determination clearly contrary? To the ordinance? That, that's.
And that's based on with the evidence that was presented.
That is based on the record on appeal, which is.
Did someone point me to the evidences to why that is impractical?
Why, what?
Why, why the is impractical to obtain the landowner's permission? That's the evidence.
Uh, well, the.
I guess I would. The planning board.
They, they made this, the, the, this is on the assumption that it is, it is impractical to obtain. The, what the, the, the feeling owner's approved. To repair a road, the, the common sense would say, yeah, you prepare the road. Um. It is done without, you know, my, I was under the impression that. Previously, there was discussion about having. Conditions. Put on the quarrying activity. Noise and whatnot and, and lim- limitations for days of operation or whatnot. So why is it not a? Um. Why is it not considered that it's a condition the road be maintained? You know, they, 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 I, I, this does work like a, you know, grasping straw to me.
I, I, I think, I think these parties would say. The ordinance requires that you be able to do that. And regardless of whether there's assumption or not, there is a step, they don't, they, they would say that, 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 the. Possibilities, I think.
Yeah, the issue is that they just can't go and do it.
They have to get, they have to get, seek permission to do it, yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Hello? Hello?
Who's that, a voice from above?
I have a question.
Please. I don't believe we're at that point yet.
Okay, but I would like everybody to identify themselves because it's not there, who is speaking?
Okay, yes, we can identify ourselves.
Well, the, the member of the board and the attorney and yourself, please, thanks. Just for the record.
Sure.
Jerome Summersby?
Right, Kevin Walls.
Hi, I'm Roger Huber, I'm counsel for the Board of Appeals.
John Mark. Jim Bright.
Thank you.
I have another question, sure. Mr. Barrett again, um. Mr. Mannahan. Indicated that i- in the course of the planning board hearings. That. Uh, the applicant was given an opportunity to return to the Ms. Eddie. And seek um more expansive easement. But. Uh, that never happens. Or at least you did not prevent any, any amended easement, is that correct?
The condition about. Having his approval not being unreasonably withheld, and I don't think you can under. Uh, underestimate the power of that language, quite frankly, was. In the easement that Mr. Musetti gave us when we expanded from thirty to fifty feet. Okay? And I gave his examples of why that he would want. To have a say in when we did things, because he uses that area as a lay down area, it's in the record for his uh. Utility poles and things, and he might need access on particular days, so that, that was, I thought, a reasonable um explanation. Uh, and I offer it to you as well, uh, the reason. Quite frankly. Uh, that we were not able to bring an easement without any such limitation in it. It's because Mr. Musetti was out of town. He was on vacation, was a very difficult man to get hold of. And believe it was not his idea, it was his lawyer who insisted that it be there, lawyer said they'll never give you a problem with that. You wanted that. Here we are.
Thank you. Could I just on that? For the record.
Sure.
Just briefly. That, that's what, what Mr. Barry said is not in the record, there's no evidence of that on the record, and this board is limited to what's in the record. Um, having said that. It's important to understand that. They had the opportunity to go back and come back with an easement to address the planning board's concerns, and they weren't able to do so. They had, I think it was a month, I don't remember exactly how much time, it was a lot of time. And, and, and it's important to understand that. It's not a question, Mr. Summersby, of whether it's practical to get that consent. I mean, probably ninety percent of the time, Mr. Musetti would consent, we go to him and say, will you consent, they'd say, yeah, I'll consent. The issue is. That the ordinance language says that the applicant has to ensure. That the, that the, basically that the infrastructure, including roads. Will be maintained in the future. And what the planning board decided was. You know, that insured means. The applicant has to be able to do it no matter what, it can't rely on somebody else's goodwill or even reasonable goodwill. And so they basically said, we don't have a choice here. They couldn't come back with an easement that removed the consent department, and, and, and let me just be clear.
Doesn't say that, I think, finding it a fact.
What, it does say that, it says.
It says, as it is impractical to obtain. I'm looking for e- evidence as to why they concluded it is impractical with an easement that says no reasonable.
Right, the, the point of that is that it's impractical, as long as they can't ensure it a hundred percent of the time, that's what that means. Is they can't, they can't ensure, and that's what the, that's what the language that's referred there in the ordinance says is. You have to ensure that the, that the infrastructure be maintained in the future. And so it's impractical to say, every single time, you got to go back to the landowner. And say, will you please allow us to maintain the road? So, I mean, I get your point, like, like, you know, a, a reasonable, nice person would do this. But.
Reasonable, no, I mean, it's just plausible, it's, it's implausible. It's impractical to make the opposite assumption. That someone doesn't want to maintain their own.
They, they, they're not making that assumption. What they're saying is, under the ordinance, he probably does want to maintain his road, well, certainly he does. But, but what they're saying is that the ordinance requires the applicant. As a matter of, 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 of approval to ensure that the road will be maintained in the future. And this provision in there doesn't allow the applicant to ensure that, that's, that's.
Subdivision ordinance, yes, I.
No, 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 this is in the QLO, the subdivision has to do with the standards that you bring the road up to. The maintenance provision is in six point two eight two of QLO, so the QLO says the applicant has to ensure that the road be maintained in the future.
Six two.
Yeah.
Six two eight two, yeah.
I'm pretty sure, I don't have right here in front, but I'm pretty sure that's it, um. And so, and so it's not, it's, it's not a question of doubting Mr. Musetti in the future, it's just a question of. The board said that they don't have the title writer interest to ensure that it'll be maintained in the future, because they, because they have that, and that's not practical. That's, that's, that's what planning board decided, and just to circle, bring it full circle. Um, that's not clearly contrary to a specific provision of the ordinance, as Mr. Huber and Mr. Plaguey said. That's what you guys, even if you would make a different finding, right, even if members of this board would, would, would come to a different conclusion. If you were on the planning board. The question is whether the planning board's decision was clearly contrary to that provision of the ordinance that I said, six point two eight two. And, and that's really for the planning board to decide. Thank you.
Yes, Dan.
Thank you, uh, Pantalagi again. Evidence. The evidence is that the code enforcement officer can force. The applicant and the developer to comply with the ordinance. The code enforcement officer cannot. Enforce the ordinance. The quarry license ordinance against Mike Musetti. Can't. And if Mike withholds permission for required maintenance, they're out of compliance. And they can't fix it. That's the evidence. And it's, it's indisputable, whether, whether we think, oh, that would never happen or where it would happen, we can't control the future, we can't make broad assumptions, as a legal right. Mike Musetti holds the cards.
But that's, that's why they, they put conditions, so if it falls out of compliance, you have to bring it back in.
That's not a condition, that's a legal right. So they have to come to the table with the legal right, because there's, if, if.
So what does a person do that has a, that has a vague? A vague right of way that is not specifically. In the positive language, give them the right to repair whenever they.
Well, there's a whole host of case law from the law court, as you know, Mr. Summersby, that talks about what those. Uh, vague descriptions mean and what you can do, you can't pave, but you can put gravel, you can, you can restore it to the condition.
Right, right, so that's what.
That's what they don't have, that's what the planning board found, they can't, because you said he can do it, he's the only one. That's just it.
As opposed to the old vague ones that does not state anything?
No, if you have an easement, no, no. I understand where you're coming from. And I don't mean to argue with you, and I apologize if it's.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to get my head around it.
So if I have a vague easement, but it's my easement.
You're either fee or you want me.
If I, if I, if I burden somebody else's property, if I own the right of way.
Yeah.
And I have a vague easement for ingress and egress. There's plenty of case law that says I can uh restore it to the, to the um condition. Uh, that it was in, or I can make it passable for the ingress, regress that was conditioned. If somebody says, hey, Dan, you've got a vague easement, but you can only, and it says in the words of the easement. But you can't maintain or improve it unless you give Jerry Summersby's. Uh, permission, that won't be unreasonably withheld, that means I don't have the right, you do.
I, I, I understand that. But my trouble is the context of, 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 you know. When the rights ways are, are written, you know, we go back. Um. To me, that language. In this day and age makes a lot of sense. I mean, there, there's situations where the fee owner can be held liable. For, you know, for damages or, or, you know, natural resource violations. Wetland fills and whatnot, if they are done by. By, by the, uh, about our burden, burdening the right of way. Um, so, you know. Having that language in there, to me. In this day and age is proven, and I disagree with you, I think that, I mean, we're, we're getting way off track of whether.
Yeah.
Whether the ruling and the findings are clearly contrary to the ordinance, but if that was really an issue, um, the easement would have said that they could only do it after informing the owner.
Well, I.
Cause then he would have had the right to go get an injunction.
But why, to, to me, uh, I'm just saying would have been reasonable, to me, it would have been. Would have seemed more reasonable, the planning board had said. That, you know, this is the condition that the road, road may not grant, instead of worrying about what's going to happen twenty five years down the road.
So, so Jerry. Again, the planning board did not have the authority, Mike just said he wasn't an applicant. And so the planning board didn't have any authority to impose conditions on Mike's. Fee ownership of that road or the.
No, but they can, but they could impose the operation of the court. If they can't, if they.
But they did.
But that would have been, to me, that would have been a reasonable compromise for both parties.
That's.
Yeah, I, I, I know, which, uh. Um.
I don't, I don't mean.
To me, to me, getting my head around why it is impractical. I mean, it would have been practical to put, put a condition on the permit that the road be maintained.
Yeah, so, so the, so the condition, again, the condition you're talking about is a condition on you said it, and, and you can. So that, so you and I have just a difference of opinion about where that, how you apply that condition. The only conditions the planning board could apply are on the applicant, and if the applicant doesn't have sufficient right title and interest. To maintain that have unfettered maintenance of the road. Then it's not clearly contrary to the, to, to the ordinance, that's where I'm coming from.
And it come down to rights. Who actually has the rights to do anything with the road?
That, now that we're in the weeds, weeds, um, on what, what, what my angle is, Ed, can you answer some, some of the?
I'd like a chance, man, it's a challenge.
Please do.
So. I, I, I'll just focus the board on uh, on section six point two A, which is the one that Mr. Mannahan has raised as imposing a. Uh, insurance policy, if you will, on the applicant. Um, that section, unfortunately, the ordinance pages are numbered, um, six point two. Section A.
No, if I have that. Oh, we're using the lineup. And down. I think I have a. I don't have that application, you know, I guess we had here with, with theirs.
Yeah.
You don't have a quarry license or whatever.
No. It must be in the binder, same. Yeah, right there. There are pages, there is no page to that, is there? We can go on, just read it, okay?
Yeah.
Sure. So the performance standards begin in section six point two, and A is intended generally requirements. Um, and, and it's, it's more in the terms of the, the way it's worded, um. Quarrying activities shall conform to all local state laws and ordinances, yep, that they shall, the activities shall comply. The owner and operator of a quarrying activity. Shall be responsible, so Mr. McQuinn and Mr. uh, again, to both be jointly and separately responsible for ensuring the maintenance of all infrastructure. Infrastructures, structures in their sites. And in cases of the applicants, so the burden of proof and all requiring standards, conditions of the ordinance, subsequent approval are met. And then you, you get into things like, okay, you got to post your license, um, and you can't extract more than twenty five hundred cubic yards. Um, and you have to reclaim within three years, those are all forward looking things, so. What would happen to McQuinn and Freshwater Stone if they extracted more than twenty five hundred cubic yards? There would be enforcement violation. And that would have to be corrected in some fashion. What would happen if they um didn't reclaim within three, within three years? It would be an enforcement act. What would happen if they didn't? Fix the road, there would be an enforcement action, if they didn't fix the road, they would be shut down. Just like they would be shut down if they extracted too much material and didn't somehow make amends to that, or if they didn't, uh, if they didn't reclaim after three years, they would be shut down. So it's not. A question of right title and interest so much as it is a practical question of what do you do? If Mr. Musetti inexplicably and unreasonably, would have to be unreasonable for him to withhold consent. Uh, unless it was very temporarily, like I described to you into the planning board, because. He's operating his lay down area and needs to get trucks in and out, he doesn't want us doing something. Uh, and when you go to section G, which is the roads, driveways, it's not a circulation standard, there's no such uh requirement that you be insured. Uh, that the, that you. Uh, requirement that you be insured uh that the, that you will always be able to fix the road or whatever. In fact, I'm not even sure. We could look up infrastructure. I'm not sure that a shared road leading to the quarry is.
It says infrastructure structures in sight.
Yeah.
Yeah, but was there any discussion in the, in the planning board? I didn't, uh. I mean, cause the same, you know, you would have a situation where a town road would fall into this repair. And, you know, if you had, if you had heavy trucks that were, you know. Takes steam up, what, what road or, you know, it's the town road, but you know, it's the, the other, the other user might be causing the. Causing damage and they'd have to stop and bring it up to repair, but they wouldn't be, they can't force it down.
As we said in our, in our, in our written argument on, on this topic, this, this, if, if it's an issue at all, it's an enforcement issue. So if and when uh a determination is made that the, that the road uh is. Inadequate for its purpose. I don't know who makes that determination. I think it would have to be the code officer. Because right now it's adequate, planning board's found it to be adequate. Um, at some point in the future, someone would have to make a determination, first of all, that it's not adequate. And that's an enforcement issue. It's not a matter of right title and interest. We have sufficient right title and interest to uh to access our site over this way. Thank you.
I guess what I'm trying to. Myself, I'm trying to figure out what's. It's the right issue. I guess that's what the uh. Planning board is based on, that they don't actually have the right to the road. It's just an easement. That they don't have the right, actual right to do anything to it. But they had to seek permission. I think that's, in my mind, I think that's how they've come to that conclusion on.
Oh, yeah, I, I see where they did. It just seems to me to be a, a, um. An invalid assumption and, and easily handled with a condition.
But that's not what they've done. Right, cause, and cause.
But they.
You said he doesn't have, hasn't granted the right to it. I think that's their.
He still owns the land, which is always going to move regardless of what he, you know. To, to me, it's just common, this is common sense. This is prudent in today's, these.
Does, does it help Mr. Summersby to think of the condition itself, uh, or the, the standard itself as a condition? That, that perhaps the planning board felt that there was no need to impose a condition because the ordinance already required it. That this was the condition itself, that, that the applicant ensure.
If you're looking for a reason to deny it, that's true. If you're looking for a reason to, to, to find common ground between the parties, you. You make a condition, the same you, you do with all the other conditions that are put on it. So to me, it's, it's looks like a. Escape hatch.
But the ordinance does say they have to ensure and for whatever reason, Mr. Mizetti's lawyer told him. To keep control. But if I'm reading it.
But I, I mean, that's for the board to determine, but that, yeah, I would, I would agree that, that. They do not, that McQuinn does not have unfettered. Access, that unfettered control over that easement, that they need to go an extra step. If they are told to. Make repairs, that they, they need to go to an extra step.
And that's kind of right away that says it cannot be unreasonably withheld.
And the lawyers would argue about what is unreasonable.
Yeah, I'm shocked on behalf of the entire world.
To me, it's, to me, it's unreasonable to assume that someone would not want their road repaired.
Right, but again, it doesn't come down to far as. What the planning board was working with, they were working with. Who actually has the right to a road is because there's that condition of you have to ask permission. And I. The planning board is probably, probably looked at it as. You shouldn't have to ask permission.
You don't have clear right.
You don't have clear right to it, so. You know, it's, you don't have the right to, the actual right to the road. You have an easement. And that you have to ask permission in order to fix it or do anything to it. And, and Mr. Mercedes had the opportunity to change that and has not changed.
Well, we don't, we don't, well, know that for fun.
Right.
I, I, I'm curious if he had, but.
Well, it's record, they, they never produced anything different than what they have.
The, we, we had. The, have it. His representation of it, but we don't have any facts one way or the other.
They were asked to provide something diff- different and that never came forward. So we, we have, what we have is. Misetti controlling the properties.
And importantly, it's what the planning board, you're reviewing what the planning board had based on the evidence that was presented at the planning board. Um, was the planning board's determination clearly contrary?
So do we have, you have more discussion or does anybody want to form? A motion? On, on the. Right away of the driveway or the, due to the conclusion.
Okay, I could be wrong this again.
Evan, could I just ask a procedural question?
Sure.
Okay. Is this discussion leading to uh an up or down vote this evening?
I am trying to, we're trying to address the first issue, which is the. The, the road is the first issue that the planning board. Had discussed, well, what's being appealed. And if, if we come to the conclusion, either we uphold it or we deny it, then that. Would continue right through to the rest because if we deny the. One of them, then. The evens over far as whatever you're gonna, you know, or if we uphold it, then we move on to the next one.
And then would we maybe with Roger's help develop findings of fact?
We would find findings of facts after whichever way we vote. On how we reached our conclusion.
Maybe have a day to do that.
Um, usually we can discuss those. Right, you know, at the time, right after we done it and then. And then we will, um. Enter our findings and facts, then a day or so for them to take whatever.
Yeah, I just think that it's important that they be framed uh as bulletproof as possible and that we're not sort of off the cuff.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to research the, the. You know, ensuring the maintenance of all infrastructure structures and their site. I mean, if the right of way is part of their infrastructure, then the town road is part of their structure. So, I mean. They, to get, they're getting a product from, from source to, to, to market. Part of the infrastructure is, is, is the road is enough, because that would be a problem. If, if, if this was, you know, someone had a fifty foot right of way coming out onto a, a, uh. Uh, a substandard town road, then it would burden the road.
Well, I think it's, right, no, we're just talking about. The, the actual road that they use.
Well, I, I like to know.
Maintain standards.
How they define infrastructure, why they define it right away.
Mentioned that planning board did discuss that when they talked about this. They had a discussion about what is. The infrastructure of their sites and they agreed that that's what's necessary for the project itself, not public, but what's privately necessary for the project itself. The access road and that the, the, all the infrastructure and their sites, that's what's included. And so, so the sites. Is the site of the project, including the private access road. That's what they.
Does the ordinance define that?
It's not defined, no, it's not defined. And so the, the planning board took their own practical approach to what that means, which is part of the application. If it's in the application, it's part of the site. And the easement is part of the application to be able to access this, public roads or not. So that's not part of the application. This is part of the application and I, and I would just. Yeah, and I would just also comment, in, in addition to that, there, there is concern, there was concern that, um. Mr. Mercedes, even though you're right, you want to have his road maintained. What if some point in the future, you decide, there's a dispute between him and, and, and. Mr. McQuinn, what if he no longer wants the gravel pit to operate there? He doesn't like it. He could at that point withhold his consent and say, hey, it's reasonable because whatever. And so, so it's, it's not, you, you're right that normally good people wouldn't. In, in normal circumstances, wouldn't withhold consent, but it's all dependent on him. And that's why the ordinance says this. It's all dependent on his goodwill. He may have a dispute with McQuinn in the future that means he might withhold consent.
And if that was conditional on the, on that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't remember that discussion, planning board. I don't know if it's in, in the minutes of their meeting in March or February of this year when they, when they made that, that finding. I don't remember them discussing uh section six point two on infrastructure as.
I discussed personally with the board.
Okay, the, the board, the board may have heard it, but I don't think that the board necessarily discussed it. And, and I don't think you can discount, uh, as Mr. Manahan does, uh, that Mr. Mercedes consent cannot be unreasonably with help. You know, he, he just suggested, oh, well, he could, you know, bring it in a few, he just says, no, can't do it anymore, don't watch it anymore. Well, that's not the way the world works. No, it's not. You can't, I mean, he, he can't just with willy nilly withhold his consent. And when you have to ensure, uh, that would also be true if we needed a permit from the D E P to fix the road. They'd have to ensure somehow that we can get that permit. Well, I don't know. Maybe we can, maybe we can't. Maybe we got across the stream. Maybe we got across the wetman. Uh, to maintain the road and we need the D E P's approval. No, uh, that's all speculative. Uh, but it's a burden at the top that the, that the applicant carries. And it's a burden that the town can enforce upon us by an enforcement action, but. I don't think it relates to right title interest. I think that this applicant has more than sufficient kind of title and interest.
Would you like me to make a rather generic, offer a rather generic? Motion?
Um, probably not at this time. I think like a motion I feel should be coming from someone in the board. And then. We can adjust it for legal needs, I guess. That's what I'm trying to. Um, I think most things should come from us first before it goes into lawyer's hands. No offense. I, I guess. The, the main thing is what is hanging everybody up is the rights to the road. That you would have to ask, no matter what, you would have to ask Mike Musetti for permission to do anything.
Where she cannot unreasonably withhold.
Right, and then it comes down to a definition of what's unreasonable. You know?
If, if it was, yeah, yeah, to me, I mean, th- this is, you know, this is in search of a property that has.
Right, right.
But I just see is, there was a reason why Mr. Mizetti's lawyer insisted upon this. As, as explained, I, I mean, i- if it were me, I would do the same. I mean, you own the land, you paying the taxes for the, for the square footage of, of that property. And, and, you know, the same goes for the six. If I give a right of way for someone that can, you know, that's got to grab a road. And do the, you know, and I want, I want to stay a gravel road. Then, you know, years back, no one, no, no one has anything. Increasingly now, you get specific. You say, you know, you can. You can do certain things and not, because, you know, it's, we're in and out of court all the time on right of ways. Because they are not, they are not specified. To me, the evolution is such is, is that, uh. And they put it, they put in what they need within not unreasonable. So, I mean, if they, uh. To, to assume that, 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 that Mike is going to be impr- it's impractical. To assume that, that Mike is going, going to be unreasonable to maintain a share, share. I understand where they get to. This could be a problem. I just find it such a. Uh, unlikely problem that it, it, uh. Se- seems, seems like a, a really narrow interpretation that I'm not sure. That it's the town.
Yes, I, I think where this discussion is going, I think there's a risk that. This board could find itself substituting its judgment for that of the planning board, and that's not what we're asking.
No, no.
Yeah, I, I think the question before us is much narrower than that, and that is. Uh, was the planning board's decision on this particular uh factor. Um, clearly contrary to the ordinance. And really, that's the question you have to answer. Not whether, I mean, that even is reasonable or not, but was the planning board acting in a way clearly contrary to the ordinance? That's the standard.
Oh, I, yeah, I'm, I'm saying that the, you know, as, as the, uh, in. I'm, I'm agreeing with his language at the planning board incorrect, incorrectly determining the applicant lacks sufficient title, right title and interest.
He's like, form motion, a, uh.
Based, you know, based on, on its reading of the easement. Uh, I'm not sure that, I mean, what, what point do we weigh in whether it's a. Inappropriate or, or valid reading of the easement. They read it and, and interpreted it. I mean, what?
And, 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 and reading it and interpreting and, and fighting as they did, was that clearly contrary? Would, do, do you feel that that, their determination was clearly contrary to the ordinance? I mean, you may disagree with it, but was it clear, was.
Contrary to common sense. But that's.
That's not. Probably enough, that's not the standard.
What is our standard?
I, that, that will help you. I struggled with all this that you, you know, when I was reading through it all, it seemed like it could be stretched. But I don't see anything in there that. Yes, common sense, I could. I can hear that, but I don't see. That that's what we're ruling on, whether they use common sense or not. They were not comfortable. That the title was clear and. Clear for them to do whatever, whether, whether that is. But you can consider common sense or not is not. What we, did they violate the ordinance? And. I think it's.
Well, we, we certainly, we, we certainly had other findings to back on our early decision that we're, we're less problematic than that. Then, you know, to say that they incorrectly determined that the, the right title and interest. They, they've taken an overly narrow interpretation of it, to something that is a problem that doesn't, doesn't exist and there's no indication. What will exist, going to exist, or that it can't be fixed if it does come to exist.
But that's not, but they're, they're following the ordinance. They're. I don't think they went against it.
So I guess we're. How do you feel? Are you guys ready to make like?
Sure. I'm making a motion that we deny the appeal. I don't know how to phrase it properly. I'll leave that to the other end of the table.
Deny the appeal on the.
On that, the.
Planning board.
Planning board aired. Did not, did not. But the appeal is that they, John, can you?
That the decision of the planning board was not clearly contrary to the ordinance. Is that what you're trying to say? And, and that's with respect to the right title and interest issue.
Correct. Yes.
Well, you, you moved to suggest, you moved to.
Well.
That's your motion.
Right, but they're also helping with the wording.
Yeah, you write that down. I'm trying to get it all. Do you have that?
I have a motion to deny the appeal uh that the decision of the planning board was not clearly contrary to the ordinance. But I'm not sure how to marry those two statements together.
Well, I guess this is where we ask our lawyer, who, what is.
For John. Do you have a lawyer?
Right, well, is, is, is simple as, as Mar- marrying those with word because, motion to deny, deny the appeal because.
Because the decision of the planning board was not clearly contrary to the ordinance.
Um, can you say, uh, planning, decision of a planning board with respect to right title and interest? Was not clearly contrary to the ordinance?
I will say that.
Okay, so the motion to not to deny the appeal because. The decision of a planning board with respect to right title and interest was not clearly contrary to the ordinance.
I'm comfortable with that. I mean, if our lawyer is comfortable with it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. March. Any further discussion?
Load center vote, all in favor with I.
All right.
Oh, fine, sorry. And all those. Name is Jerry.
And Jerry, you are opposed, yes.
Yeah, I, I. Don't think they, they dummy's very one that they.
I just need to hear it.
Yeah.
Yep. So it's. We don't want it, it's denied. The appeal.
Okay.
I hear you're ready to say something.
I know you are, and you're looking at me to see if I'm gonna say anything, you're right, I am. Is, is, is the boarding trying to take up the issue on, on purpose, um, my, my concerns, I, obviously. Almost a hundred percent, this will be appealed to Superior Court. Um, the Superior Court for those, if, if you don't know, um. Will do the exact same thing that you have done, they will ignore your decision.
Sure.
They will ignore your decision, and they will review the operative decision, which is the planning board, and, and, and the spirit board will go through these exact same analysis that, that.
Right.
That you've just done. Um, if. If the board over, if the spirit. Is there any need to go over it, that, is there?
Yeah, I think once you.
The second issue?
I think when you deny. Out of the appeal, when the appeal is denied.
Yeah.
I don't think we have to continue further.
Continue on the, the second issue.
No, I think, once there's something's denied, then, then the appeal is denied.
Doesn't disadvantage. Any of the parties?
Well, I think it's playing, it does, I mean, I, I, I can't demand, I mean. Get the front of Superior Court will have two issues that we'll be raising on appeal. Right title and interest and the purpose provision and spirit goals, and whether, or the appeal to the purpose provision.
No, they're not gonna, the, the spirit person I can review this board's decision.
Basically, um, yeah, we can, we can skip that. Um, we do need to take some action, however, on the cross appeals. Um, and, and my suggestion, and I, I, we have to get way in from the, the attorneys, but a, a denial. For both of them, based because they're moot.
I'm thinking dismissal, that, that dismissed them as moot, right? Yeah.
Dismissal?
Right.
The consequence is the same.
Will, will the court review this de novo?
The court will review this in an appellate capacity. They're not, they're gonna ignore whatever happened here.
Not obviously, but the planning board decision.
Appellate, just like you have done. It will not be, yeah, just like you have done.
That it will be bound by the standard clearly contrary to the.
Right. It'll be looking to see whether there was an error of law, abusive discretion, or findings. Um, not supported by substantial evidence in the record, any evidence in the record.
So if we don't address the purpose issue tonight. How will Mr. Bear be able to raise that in Superior Court?
He's gonna raise it. Because he's, he is, he is appealing the planning board's decision.
You know, correct. If the board, however, were to rule in our favor, I would only have one issue on appeal. Two.
Yeah.
Well, I was always, once. I was always under the assumption on how this works, is that, once we deny. The appeal, then it ends here, then we, they can. Take it, and, and, you know, we don't sue any further because. That application has already been denied, you know.
Yeah, you, you, you have fulfilled, fulfilled your obligation at this point.
Correct, yeah. So now we wanna do, uh, findings of facts.
Very similar to it.
Yeah, well, actually. I don't have to be friends with, well, I just started based on. We, we normally do findings of facts, just for our, I guess it's for our decision on one. But.
I don't wanna minimize what you do, but as Roger has said, the court's not going to affect your decision.
Okay.
You, you, you act in an appellate capacity, which means the facts were as found by the plan.
Correct, alright.
As long as you don't agree with those facts, I just think your motion actually is sufficient.
Yeah. Well, I think there's only.
Can I ask just one thing before you go?
Sure.
Can the record reflect that we do object to not taking up the second issue, just so that, okay, so I have to preserve it in some way, I can.
I'm fine with that.
Do, do you have that, man, secretary?
Um, yes, I'm still writing.
What you done fast over the years?
What, what are you doing terms, typically in terms of issuing written decisions?
Uh, well, we usually, soon as they're typed up and then we come in and sign them. And we try to do that.
Rapping it.
Well, who, who grabs?
It's only us.
Yeah, would you like me to rap?
Sure, okay.
You want, I, I'm not gonna, I haven't dropped anything you asked me to. But my, the reason I raised my hand is, um, I think the board needs to act formally, we need to make a vote to dismiss.
Oh, no, I haven't, yeah, we're gonna get to that, but that, that's absolutely right, the board does need to. Yeah, no, the board does need to take action on the dismissal of the two cross appeals.
Oh, okay. Well, then we need a motion on that.
Which, which were. Go for Jerry. Well, uh, just paraphrase the cross appeals, which, which ones are those?
You have to see on the agenda.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, he's gonna do that.
I'll offer to make a motion. But I know you don't want it, but I'm gonna offer anyway. I'm not making a motion, I will offer a motion for someone to make.
Right, and that'd be fine.
Put it in the legal ease.
You want me to do it?
Sure.
Okay, um, uh, the cross appeals filed. I'm sorry?
Please go slowly.
I was so excited that I finally got to read one of my motions, it is, I'm sorry. The cross appeals filed by the Hall Forty Neighbors Group. And by Gerald and Lori Schenkovitz. Peter and Judy Allen. And Jan Coats are hereby dismissed as moot.
So moot. Well, somebody's gonna make that motion, are you making that motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ooh, Mr. March is making the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say a.
Alright.
Alright.
All in favor of this.
Yep. And now there is. One left. One thing left to do.
Make a motion, we, yeah.
No.
We check for the draft. Move, we turn.
All in favor.